To order, we'll start with roll call. Lewandowski?
Here.
Johnson? Travis?
Here.
Navara? Ives?
Yep, getting here.
Shaw?
Here.
Lopez Cunha?
Here.
All right, I think we've just stand for the pledge of allegiance. So we're going to have McKenna lead us in the flag.
Pledge of allegiance, true of the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
That'll be a fight all fine.
It should be, right?
That's a good idea.
Good evening, Board of Education. At this time, I would like to invite McKenna Scotulus to the flag here. McKenna was honored at our June board meeting. McKenna and her family were unable to attend in June, so we will honor her tonight. This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of McKenna Scotulus, whereas Lockport Township High School junior student, tomorrow senior student, McKenna Scotulus, was named Allstate pole vault third place at the IHSA Allstate Track and Field Championship, earning the title on May 21st, 2022, at Eastern Illinois University in Charleston, Illinois. And whereas coaches Joe Kravitz and Jason Friere have aided and guided McKenna Scotulus in her success as a Lockport Township High School District 205 athlete. Now therefore be a result by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that McKenna Scotulus is hereby recognized for her outstanding achievements and dedication to her school, family, and community. And that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School District 205, this 20th day of June, back at that time, 2022.
That's a lie, yeah.
Yeah, congratulations, thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, just for the board, as a parent of a former high school pole vaulter, third place, very difficult, very difficult at an IHSA meet.
Congratulations, McKenna, congratulations.
Nice job, McKenna.
All right, then, do I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
So moved?
Second.
The motion by Dr. Strong, seconded by Mr. Ives. Roll call. Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Uh, yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes.
All right, we have no student reports. We have the AFT report, Ms. Katie Kishline.
Hello, everyone. So we ended our day today with one word, and it was excited. So I am excited to be here tonight. There have been many amazing things happening the past few months. First of all, I want to thank the maintenance and custodial staff. Literally, the floors were shining today as I walked on them. And so I don't think people realize how much work goes in to this place over the summer. So just want to make a shout out to them, to the office professionals who had the vital part in our welcome back days, the start of the fall sports, new teacher meetings, and our all-staff institute today. We couldn't have done it without them. Angie Pompeo Leo and myself, we were able to attend a week-long training up in Wisconsin for the AFT-IFT Midwest Convention, where we took place in a grievance training all week. So we learned a lot of good things, met a lot of, you know, great people, good contacts to have when you need to bounce ideas off of, you know, somebody that's been through it. So we learned a lot. We had many coaches and sponsors, had a successful summer of camps going on all summer long here. Last week, we welcomed 17 new teachers, along with our student teachers, who in our current educational system are very vital to this process. So we are happy to have them here. And today, we honored Frank DeSandro for 40 years of service to this district. So it was great to see him. And last, we announced our staff retiring this year, which I wish I could join them, but I have 13 more years to go, so. But together with everyone, we are prepared to guide and inspire the students that will show up tomorrow. So we're looking forward to a great year. So thank you for all that you do.
Thanks, Katie. Thank you.
Thank you. IASB report.
She's not, Lewin's not here.
Yeah, I think you would have to just pick up the presentation.
There we go, because Lewin's not here. Mike, you want to do it?
I'm not.
You're here, Luanne?
We're out here. About the book that I was about to remind you about? Apologize, my back here, because I can sit right behind me.
Good evening. Like Lewin, who usually represents the board and the school at the IASB meetings, is not here. I guess she's going to be here later, I guess, or something like that. So Dr. Shaw and I will, you know, take the lead from here. Basically, what we're going to talk about, and what we're going to talk about in a few minutes, is what we gathered over seven and a half hours of meetings at the IASB workshop, called the Trust Edge. Dr. Shaw and myself were there, along with several board members, and some of the administration were there. And what we did there is we turned this into a part of our retreat, because as you all know, each year, we coordinate our activity with the IASB workshop. And the Trust Edge, they sponsored the presenter, David Horseger? Is that how you pronounce his name right? And he was outstanding. And it was up in Naperville on August 6th. And we had, we used that meeting because it was really a networking opportunity with other districts that were there. And it was really an educational opportunity that I got a lot out of. I know Dr. Shaw did, and there were a lot of favorable comments. Dr. Shaw even won a book from him, which he got right here, so.
He signed it.
He, is it, it's autographed? Oh, it is, it's to you. So I have not read the book, but I am going to read the book after the presentation that he did. He was so engaging, and I really enjoyed listening to him, called the Trust Edge. You know, the only downside is that he talks about representing the New York Yankees and being from Boston. We can't represent any Yankee fans, so, but that was okay. But I, he was great. It was well-attended by several districts that were there. You know, the, it was an engaging discussion. And it wasn't just, let's listen to him and let's take it all in. There was a lot of activity with interaction in mind, depending on what table you sat at. And you would interact with other school districts. There were questions that would come up amazingly, you know. I shouldn't say amazingly, I guess I shouldn't be too surprised after all these years. But a lot of school districts have the same issues we have. It's not, you know, we're not unique to everybody else. But, you know, there's a commonality out there. And there's also a common approach on how they address and how they deal with them, which was good to see. I think Joliet was the highest representative. They had like three tables over there, so they were pretty active. But, you know, and, you know, you go to a lot of things. We go to IASB in November at the statewide convention. You know, Anne and Dr. McBride and Lewin have been to several other things along with Veronica. And every time I leave there, how impressed I am with LTHS. What we learn, you know, they go and, oh, we don't know how to deal with this. And I actually gave a woman my card, because we had a similar issue, with a new board member coming on, she wanted to talk about that. But we do stand out, and it's, and it is noticed, because they, you hear, oh, you're from Lockport? And I go, yeah, football state champs, that's us, yeah. But one of the other things was, they asked the question sometime on Saturday, you know, probably early on, when the question was posed by the presenter. No, this is our first workshop, I apologize. When we broke out, they said, okay, we know there's a teaching crisis. They asked, they said, how many schools here are fully staffed? And this was August 6th that we were meeting, right? And one school raised their hand, and that was us. We, you know, which we're quite proud to raise our hands high. And I know a lot of the credit goes to, you know, Tony, his staff, Dr. McBride. The administration worked endlessly in everything that you guys do, principals and everyone, get the staff here. So it's, you know, Texas, 2,000, you know, empty teachers at the start of school. So we don't, you don't take it for granted. So congratulations on a job well done in getting us there. But to the, you know, to the presentation at hand. So I guess I could be like the weather guy and press all these buttons, and we'd never get anywhere. So I figured I'd let someone else to do that one. You know, the objectives, you know, of, you know, for the board and the administration that were attendance, you know, we wanted our team to learn more about how to trust and to improve the communications and effectiveness and the resulting productivity. This goes within ourselves as a board. It goes within Dr. McBride and the administration, or, you know, we also talked to some of that. And also, you know, a very important thing, it's the district and the board voice within the community and the community itself. I think it's very important, because I think that's where we've got some work to do. But, you know, they, you know, and so, you know, and the objective, they said, you know, what is trust? And you do what's right, and what you do that you promise, regardless of the circumstances. You know, sometimes you can change your opinion and change what you're doing. As long as you have a reason for it, no one's going to second guess that. You know, the lack, you know, lack of trust causes ineffectiveness. And you say, okay, you know, someone doesn't trust you, how ineffective is that? It's going to be costly, it's going to be costly to the district in both time and resources. You know, in getting things done, and getting things done on time, and probably repeating. And, you know, I just said we have a full complement of staff. If they don't start trusting us, I think we could lose some, and that would be heading in the wrong direction. Three, accountability, which is big in my book, and it really defines the character of each individual that you're working with. You know, clarify expectations, you know. What, you know, if you tell someone what you expect of them, then you can hold them accountable. If they don't, if you don't, they don't know what's expected, then you can't hold them accountable. Because it's, that's an unfair, but you want to, you know, you want to reduce conflicts by improving those relationships. And, you know, what's the task at hand? And there are many, I get it, the doors open tomorrow at both schools. I know you're fully ready. But the effectiveness, you know, and how that is done is very important, and it's watched by others, too. And, you know, they don't take for granted. It does not come easy, what everybody does, we know that. Good timing there, good. You know, some of the observations that, you know, these were some statistics that were given to us. But Dr. Shaw will talk in a minute about the eight pillars of trust. That was really the framework for a lot of the various discussions that we had. But I'm going to, I'm going to skip that and refer to her. You know, you know, success at its core is a direct benefit of being trusted. And I think that doesn't surprise anybody. And we stay committed. Stay committed during adversity is very important. You know, if you're not trusted, you know, they said, you know, you lose 83% of your support. One of the ones that surprised me was, you know, this, you know, three out of four want consistency. What does the fourth person want? I mean, like, you know, I would have thought that would have been 100%, but, you know, say you go 75% and I go, okay, what's the other person want, you know, really want? So I thought that was a little off. And the collaborative leadership and, you know, combined, you know, the difference between collaborative and co-leaders is you can have two people, you know, have their own agenda in trying to lead the group forward, and you could end up with conflict. Again, you could end up with wasting time. Collaborative, which I think LTHS and the district does a very good job at, is exceptional. There's a lot of, no, there's not a lot of unilateral decisions. There's always someone you're brought into, you know, Anne and I, as vice president and as president. You know, Dr. McBride will run something by us, and sometimes we say, well, reach out to the board members, because we want to get, you know, see what they feel. Or Dr. McBride, you know, will say, look, you know, reach out to the administration, because he's the direct contact. And there's many voices, and I think that's why LTHS is so strong.
Can I jump in on that real quick?
Sure.
All right. So one thing I found interesting when he was talking about collaborative leadership, he said, yes, get all the opinions that you want, he said, but give one person the success of the task. So when you're finishing up a task, that one person should be the point person, because if you put two people on a job, it's never going to get done, is the way he put it. So just wanted to add that piece in there.
And the last, you know, you know, faith in those that, you know, you know, if you have your personal agenda, it's going to get seen pretty quickly, and people may not have faith in it. If they agree with your agenda, yeah, they will have faith in it. But if they don't, you know, that can be, come out quite easy. And basically, and again, I think this is something that the district does, district-wide, you stay current in what the issues are and what's going on out there. And by doing so, I know Dr. McBride is a leader in a lot of the secondary education workshops and, you know, various, you know, many things that you get called upon. They ask for your opinion, and then, or you're calling the other schools as well. So that is very briefly, again, we, you know, we can only talk about so much in an eight-hour meeting. But I will let you talk about the pillars.
This is going to be very brief. Again, we spent seven hours in this workshop, and it was all about these things. So you're going to get the very watered down version. I recommend reading the book. Anybody wants to borrow my version, they can. So the eight pillars, consistency, just making sure that the little things are done consistently. Take one or two ideas and build on those. Just make sure you're not taking a huge amount on, but just stay the course. Building connections, learning through teamwork and friends. They said, learning about each other is probably the most vital thing that you can do as an organization, just because then you understand where other people are coming from. And I found this part to be very interesting, because there was one board member from another district that was like, I don't know what you're talking about, just get the job done. And it was just kind of one of those things where, you know, I think by the end, he kind of was, I think he was coming along a little bit, he was a little bit less.
We brought him over to the dark side.
Yeah, okay. Competency, acknowledging weaknesses. I think that that's a huge thing. Vulnerability and admitting to be vulnerable is, yeah, a huge piece of, you know, admitting when you're wrong is a good thing. Compassion, praise, be present. People put faith in those who care beyond themselves, just so, just having compassion for the bigger picture of things that might be going on in people's lives. Contribution, give time to coach and mentor, and that, because people will respond to results in that way. Commitment, just again, admitting your own mistakes. People believe those who are consistent through adversity. Again, we talked, Dick talked about that, just making sure that you're consistent regardless of what's happening. And then character, do what is right over what is easy, and lead by example. Doing what is right is always going to supersede doing, you know, going the easy way. And then clarity, provide clear instructions and feedback. And I think that one of the big pieces of these pillars was the fact that it was more so affirming, because those are things that we're already doing, so. That's it for the.
That's it for the, yeah, there's, it's in the book. And, you know, usually when you do presentations, and one of the things that I, you know, I attend a lot of them, and you look at the presenter, and they said, you hope they just don't read verbatim what's on your slide? I'm going to break that rule right here, because I'll tell you why. We asked, you know, Veronica and I, and a lot with Kathy's help, we asked various, you know, the board members that were in attendance, as well as the administration, give us some takeaways of the experience and the comments you heard. And this is just a snapshot of them. Some people had many, many, a long list of them. But this was, there was a commonality in some of these. So I just want to take a second and read them, because I think they're all right on point and very important. You know, when you know better, do better. You know, boards, you know, boards need to have one voice, even if you don't agree. I mean, what that refers to is that we have seven board members. You know, we are collectively as a board, we come up on an issue, we may not all seven agree, but if that is what the board agrees with, then that's what you, that's what you go with. There were issues, the vote was six to one, and I was the one. But I stand, stood behind what the board decided. The lack of trust in an organization is the biggest expense. I talked about that briefly, it's just, and it's, the expense is not, you know, time and resources. Our biggest asset here is, you know, the people in this room, and the many teachers and faculty that are going to show up tomorrow with our kids. People should know your passion and not your party, and that's just basically, you know, it's not, you know, that's the group mentality, you know, know what your passion is, you know, go with what your passion is. It takes humility to think collaboratively, and I really like that one, actually. And because it's really, you're asking a person to say, okay, listen to what someone else, you know, they may have a better idea, or they may have, you know, better, build the mousetrap a different way. I mean, I like that one a lot. One action that would increase retention, keep the promises. And obviously, clearly, you do, I know there were a lot of vacancies that the, that you had, but, you know, you know, a lot of them, you keep on coming back. And I always impressed if you look at the list of experience and the years of experience that our staff and administration have, and a lot of it's here. It's not just in the industry, it's here, which is terrific. You build trust when you stay consistent in crisis communication, no doubt about that. Unless, you know, you may change, but as long as you give the reason why you do change. And when you do what's right, you can even trust yourself, which is a nice way to end it. So, you know, that's the brief, you know, takeaways. Kathy, if anybody wanted these slides, can they email you and you can get, all right. So if anybody wants them, they can, you know, because some people may, or, you know, we've got the book. Or if you want to get the book, it was, it was really good, so. Any questions?
Thanks for working with us.
Thanks.
Yeah, it was a great experience, really, really excellent.
And then my understanding is, I think there's a pre-conference workshop on that trust that.
There is, and Mike couldn't make it, and then I already suggested he sign up for it.
Yes.
And you? You're going to go, I'm going to talk you into it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. All right, foundation report.
I am playing the role of Angela Adolf, she, like many of us, is taking a child to college, which I just did over the weekend, so she is in Texas doing that, so it's going to be a big month for the foundation, they just had their regular meeting last week, or actually, two weeks ago. September 8th, I'm going to show a very brief, one-minute video to board members, my report, Young Hearts for Life, an organization I've been involved in, is in many permutations, a high school principal, literally saving lives. Been around for over twenty years, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand screenings, mainly checking the rhythm, heart rhythm, to avoid sudden cardiac arrest in teenagers across this country, about forty to sixty students. In the United States, adolescents lose their life to sudden cardiac arrest that is screenable, preventable, it's just the rhythms of the heart, don't catch up with the development of the body, and it, it can happen, and if you look in your newspaper enough, you sometimes see that happening, and it's not just athletes, sometimes people think it's athletes. So, we're going to need two-hundred volunteers, it's a great volunteer opportunity, they do have to be adults. September 8th, during PE classes here at East, we will eventually catch up to freshmen when they become a little bit older, and that is on September 8th. So far, grant donations are really covering the cost of the Young Hearts for Life here at Lockport Township High School. Foundation board is now at fifteen members, it is at its peak, it cannot accept any more members, and kudos to Angela Adolf for building that to a full complement of fifteen. Big night, September 24th, most of our students, we hope, are here at homecoming, adults might be down at Lockport City Hall. Fundraiser, which the foundation is hoping becomes a marquee fundraiser, is Taste of Lockport. I think we already have, we're at capacity for vendors, the band Maggie Speaks is going to play, so should be a good night. And then, in November, we're looking for a date in November to have a fine arts festival, where our, our sender schools, our feeder schools, would send visual art, and then also performance art, choir, band, to perform, campus here, along with our bands, and the artwork our students have produced so far. And then, next meeting is Tuesday, September 13th, at 4:00 PM right here in the portal room.
If the, for the volunteers on the Young Hearts for Life, that's, it's, you know, I understood and I know, so it was nine, September 8th, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a time?
There, there will be, when you, when you go to sign up, it does have the time, there is an obligation the night before.
Okay.
There are hour-long training sessions.
Okay.
For those volunteers that are relatively important.
Yep.
So that information, when you go to our website, we're floating around, I know on some of the material is QR code, very important.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, legislative report.
Well, usually when it's election season, the legislator is relatively quiet, especially in August, so they are in recess. A few things that we are sorting out, Governor Pritzker, on July 22nd renewed the disaster, the state's disaster proclamation for COVID-19, and so we're sorting out, is there anything in there for schools? Our, our law firms haven't dissected that, it doesn't seem, you know, like, like, like there is, but we'll consider, we'll keep looking. Illinois Department of Public Health released its interim guidance, which really aligns, you know, how to handle positive cases of COVID, close contacts, it's consistent with really what we've been following since last year, February of last year, so in terms of isolation, return to school, testing, things like that. Also, a number of law firms right now, we're starting to get reports from the law firms that we seek out information for, on a couple of issues that are, that are coming out of Supreme Court rulings in June, and then also one impending case. One, you might have seen the Supreme Court case of freedom of expression, religious expression on school grounds, so this fall is full of seminars of what that, what that actually means, what are those limits, and, and what does that mean for all faiths? And then there's an pending Supreme Court argument in October regarding how Harvard University and University of North Carolina handle race as a admissions factor. You might say, we're not a university, we don't have a board of admissions, but sometimes those rulings have, find their way into the laws, regulations, things that guide a public school. Any questions? All right, that is a legislative report.
Thank you. Next, we have public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board, however, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been, until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. Every time a member of the public speaks during public comments, the superintendent or appropriate district administrator will contact the individual on behalf of the Board of Education the following day to discuss their concerns. Please, there is none?
There is.
There is, there is none. Okay. And there is no communication, and then, as you can see in your board packet, we have those information requests. And we're moving down to our approval items, do I have a mo?
Excuse me, the Freedom of Information Act, have those been responded to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Right, they're, they're past the timeline for response.
All right.
Come here, I'm a little behind you, though.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 18, 2022 Regular Board of Education meeting minutes?
Some more.
Second.
All right. Are there any questions to those minutes? All right, hearing none, just need a motion. Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, you're making a motion.
I already made one.
No, we already had, we had the motion.
Oh, you had the motion, that's right, I'm sorry, okay, roll call.
We know what you meant, so we're just going with it.
All right. Al-Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniga? Yes. All right, next we have, I have a motion to approve the August 2022 board member expenses.
Yeah, because there's no, no closed session minutes, right?
No, there's no closed session.
So move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to those expenses? All right, hearing none, roll call. Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniga? Yes. All right, next we're going to move to our treasures report, and we have, we have Cory.
Couple of things I'd like to point out in this month's treasures report, it's the first month of the new fiscal year of being reported to you, so July is in there, so when you take a look at the financial reports, in the revenue and expenditure reports, you'll see that the tentative budget that was approved by the board last month is now reflected in there. The tentative budget has also been posted on our website, as is required by law, so that if anyone wants to take a look at the, what was approved last month, it's out there, and a notice was published in the newspaper as well to notify the public about our public hearing in September for approval of the final budget. So at this time, I'm still working through the information that I'm receiving to update some data, for example, the evidence-based funding figures were just released for the school districts within the last week, so that, you know, that number gets, I can update that figure based on what was approved. Transportation claim was due today, and so that number is now solidified, and I can update those figures, so that's the type of things that we'll see different from last, from the July tentative budget approval to the September final, and of course, I'll have more information on all of that in September with the final budget. The other couple of pieces of information that are new in this month's treasures report, because they're just pertinent pieces of information that came up this month, and one was a request by board member Ives from last month. The first piece of information is the P-card rebate, it's just a piece of information we tend to give the board every year, let you know that our P-card, procurement card program that allows our, many of our administrators and department chairs and some of the teachers that need them for their expenses in their classrooms, they use procurement cards with restrictions on them, instead of having to go through the traditional procurement process for things that are needed on a day-to-day basis. For example, our maintenance personnel, they can run and get supplies with a procurement card, for example. So we get a rebate based on that activity, we're not doing anything different than we would have, we would have been paying those by check, but instead, we're doing this. So the district gets a rebate check that goes right, right back into the money that we can spend on the students, so. That is in here for the board's information. And then finally, board member Ives last, asked last month about collection of school fees, and what our senior class collections looked like, balances still owed when they graduated. So you have a chart here for about ten years that lists what, some basic information about that, number of students, combined balances owed, and then some comparison to what percentage of the class that is. And you'll, you'll see that over the most recent years, we have improved in those collections, you'll see that the lowest percentages in the chart are the last two years. So getting seniors to make sure that they've paid all their balances upon graduation, our efforts have not gone in vain, right, trying to make one-on-one contact with, with families and work out arrangements to make those, get, have those payments made. And then there's a figure in there of where we're at as of the date of preparation of this board packet, as well on the current group of seniors, and for further information on that, is the next step is, once school's up and running, my office will send statements. And so then, after that, then we follow up more specific, that'll go to all students that still owe some money, and then, after that, we'll follow up more specifically with senior parents, and we'll go from there.
So you say all students, you're referring to all currently enrolled students?
All currently enrolled students that still owe balance, that didn't get their fees paid by, you know, we'll probably send them out the very beginning of September.
Okay, yeah, and I agree with you, the, I had the same observation, nine out of the ten past years, you have improved, you know, it has really improved, so I thank you for that. What are we doing about the more recent ones? There, we have ten years here, and there's some old years that we're not going to see that, but the last couple of years, are we, are we following up on any of those, or what are we doing?
So historically, years ago, we've sent some things to collections, okay? The concern with doing that is that the district doesn't get, that we'll get fifty percent of it if we send it to a true collection agent. So what we have done or can continue to do is we can continue to send statements, but once they're not here anymore, it's not as effective. So what happens is, in all reality, the students that come back and need a transcript for some reason, come and pay that balance, because that's when we have contact with them again.
Yeah, but your numbers are so good, I, I, I mean, I don't think it would be that difficult to do a follow-up the last two or three years, I mean, it's worth, I'm not recommending sending them to the collection, but, you know, you have done well.
Maybe come up with some kind of a letter to send to?
Yeah, to say, you know, following, it's still, it's still a balance, still, it's still their obligation, so.
Or that known address.
Right. That's the thing, if they've moved, then we're.
There was so much that work, I know Mr. Bartley's behind me over my shoulder, we are no longer able, by state school code, to hold a diploma or a transcript, but we, we can do things, if folks have in, I reference Mr. Bartley, because he's exceptional in sitting down with people and saying, listen, here's, where your fees are, we understand, can we, can we work something out, maybe an initial contribution, work out a plan, even if you're senior and graduate. The one thing that, that we can hold is, is graduation tickets, but just like collections, who wants to be in a relationship that, you know, is hounding people? So it becomes about working with people and in their circumstances, and at the same time, understanding that the majority of our parents have paid their, their fees in full. And it's also worth remembering, you know, if we did a comparison, we have one fee, three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. Most school fees in this area are à la carte, here's your technology fee, your registration fee, if you're in athletics, a different fee, your activity fee, and then go down to the bookstore and now purchase all of your books. So that three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars, I think if we stood that up against many of the high school districts in the area, would be about two-hundred to three-hundred dollars to last them.
Yes.
What this parent spent for his children in high school, so.
Yeah, but I, I think we owe it to the ones that do pay to make the effort to see if they can.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Everyone has different circumstances, I respect that, but.
Now, as far as those seniors, I know, because now they're getting a parking permit, can we hold that off on them? Not a parking permit, but yes, a parking permit, can we?
Parking permits, my understanding, Mr. Bartley, is that we are telling them they have to have fees paid in full in order to get a parking pass, because a parking pass is not, it's, it's a, it's not a requirement, we have another way for them to get to school, right? We will pick them up. So they, it's a privilege to be able to park here, and we do have limited space anyway, so that, unless there's some extenuating circumstances, that is the case, that we are telling people that they owe their balances paid, and then we can remind people as they come to start buying homecoming tickets, by the way, you still owe fa, you know, fees, things like that.
But the efforts are clearly showing much better numbers.
Oh, yeah. Are there any questions on the treasures report or any other part of the treasures?
Nope, not this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, then, do I have a motion to approve the July 2022 treasures report? Some of?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Ives, roll call. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniga?
Yes.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, hey, I'm going to start out with two videos, before I do that, I want to sort of support the comments that Katie Kishline made, just about the innumerable people that, that in the past three weeks made the beginning of school tomorrow happen. Our support staff, our principals planning welcome-back days and freshman orientation, people who planned institute days, did retreats with, with leadership teams, board of education presidents who came this morning, started her morning talking to staff members, just so much muscle goes into opening a school. But I, but I do, and you'll see it in Mr. Thompson's report, I do have to single out our grounds, custodian, and maintenance staff. You know, when you walk all, you know, all of our facilities and you see how much they take on in the summer, and you're somewhat horrified two weeks ago that the place will never be put back together because it's all falling out, and then magically, it is, and just to see people working so hard to, to put things in, get things fixed, and have them in, in really mint condition, it, it's amazing, so congratulations, Mr. Thompson. I know two weeks ago, you were a little sweaty, busy, but you got the job done. So, hey, two videos, I thought that the board and the public should see. One, I apologize to Am Lopez Cuniga, but I think it's worth meeting our new teachers.
Hey, everybody, welcome back. Hey, everybody, welcome back, we're excited to start off the school year, and we want to introduce you to our new staff members.
Welcome back, staff, I want you to think about the person or people who made you feel most welcome on your first day here at LTHS, and I challenge you to be that person for our new group of teachers. One of the most important things we do are hire the great people that we have here at Lockport Township High School. So without further ado, here are our new teachers.
Please make sure you welcome to the Porter family.
Hi, my name is Amy Hanno, I will be working in the Special Education Department. As an alum from Lockport High School, I'm really excited to get back to the community and be back in the place where I fell in love with special education.
Hi, my name is Dominic Strom, I will be working in the Science Department. What I'm most excited about coming back to Lockport, because I am an alum, I graduated in 2012, I'm most excited to give back to the community, specifically helping students grow, especially in a, in a time where it feels like education's under attack, I'm just really excited to come back and really just start, I've essentially come back to come back and really just start, I've essentially come back to where I started, so.
Hi, I'm Dan Marfisi. I'm in the mathematics department, and I'm really looking forward to offering dual credit classes to our math students.
My name is Olivia Akinfora, and I'm joining the social studies department, and I'm so excited to collaborate with fellow teachers and staff to get to know students and just support them throughout the year.
My name is Molly Cook. I'm in the visual art department, and I'm excited to join this community and work with my fellow staff to meet the students and do the best job that I can this year.
I'm Will Seok. I'll be joining the CCA department, and I'm super excited to share a passion with the high school students.
Hello, my name is Nina Threbrizias. I'll be in the CCA department, and I'm super excited to build a community with my department and my students.
Hi, my name's Joey Dunlap. I'm part of the English department. I'm looking forward to help those freshmen grow at the central campus.
Hi, I'm Anna Medrock, and I'm a member of the visual and performing arts staff. I'm the new assistant band director. I'm super excited to be returning to Lockport and developing a great culture of excellence with our band students.
Konnichiwa. My name is Amy Onoda. I'm from Japan. World language and culture. I'm really excited to teach Japanese language and culture. I'm so excited to see you guys at classroom.
Hi, I'm Audrey Gonzalez. I will be teaching in the math department this year. I graduated from Lockport in 2010. And when I did graduate, I felt super prepared for the real world. And I'm excited to, you know, give back to that community and have other students have the same good experience that I had here.
Hi, I'm Hallie Hoffman. I'll be in the math department this year at Lockport. I'm super excited to get started collaborating with both students and teachers here at Lockport. And I can't wait to continue my learning as a teacher and really a student as well.
My name is John Ryan, and I'm going to be teaching in the CCNA department. This will be my first year teaching, so I'm really excited to get started. I'll work with a lot of freshmen, hopefully get them excited and inspired to continue on with business classes. And then in addition to that, I'm excited to be coaching both football and baseball this year.
My name is Francesco Paeze. I'm in the special education department, and I'm really looking forward to learning chemistry and getting to know my students, building relationships with them, getting to know the city of Lockport.
Hi, my name is Steve Meyer. I'm in college and career applications, and I'm looking forward to bringing new dual credit opportunities here to Lockport High School.
Hi, my name is Donna Tomichader. I'm in the art department, and I'm really excited to get to know the students and work with them and expand their art knowledge.
Hi, I'm Ian Sanchez. I'm in the arts department, and I'm excited to get kids excited into art and sort of make connections here.
Hi, my name is Taylor Bennett. I'm going to be teaching earth and space science here at Lockport, and I'm so excited to not only teach my students, but learn from them and also get them excited about science.
Hi, my name is Juliana Murphy. I'm in the special education department, and I am so excited to start off the school year. I'm a student teacher, so this is my first year, and I'm just excited to gain experience.
Hi, my name is Bianca Vanich. I am a student teacher in the college and career applications department. I come from ISU, and I graduated from Lockport in 2018, and I am so excited to just be a part of the teaching community here at Lockport and bring my love for being a woman in the technology and engineering department to the entire school.
Hi, my name is Reham Yunus. I'm a student teacher from Governor State University. I'll be in the English department, and I'm very, very excited to work alongside my old teachers that taught me when I graduated in 2017.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Garrett-Bay. I'm a school psychologist, and I work in the guidance department, and I'm excited and looking forward to serving all of the students and families here at LTHS.
Hi, my name is Carly Sullivan. I'll be working in the business department this year, and I'm excited for a new challenge.
Hey, guys. My name's Darian Jacobs, and I am going to be joining the PE department this year. And what I am looking forward to the most is just meeting the students and also meeting the staff. I'm new to the Lockport area, and I am coming from the south, like literally as we speak, and I need friends. So looking forward to meeting you guys. We'll talk soon. Bye.
Moving. He was down in Alabama. He's United States Air Force, National Guard, reserves, and he was training last week. So not coming to a new school, but all last week, training in Alabama. So just one, really quick, we get Jersey Jonyak helping us out with Young Hearts for Life.
Oh, hey, Lockport. Just wanted to let you know that Young Hearts for Life is coming to East Campus for a free life-saving ECG screening on September 8. Each week, 60 students from the ages of 14 to 20 pass away from sudden cardiac arrest. And this screening will help prevent that from happening to any of us here at Lockport. This program has been around for 20 years and has screened over 280,000 students. Sophomores through seniors can sign up by clicking the link below. And if you sign up, you can get out of your PE, health, or driver's ed class. So there's really no reason you shouldn't sign up. It takes about 30 seconds to complete the screening, and it's completely free. This program requires over 200 volunteers. So after students are signed up, parents, you can also sign up to volunteer. All the information you need can be found online or by calling Young Hearts for Life. Now, thanks for taking the time to watch this video. Now go sign up.
Case of work of our public relations department. Mr. Slager put most of those together, even sliding Darian's video in just right at the end. I'm not dodging my superintendent port, but I do have a very important guest behind me. I'm asking Mr. Detective Wostaki to come and join us. A number of things that I'd like to highlight as we come into school again, I don't think for administrators, for parents, for board members, safety and security really never leaves our minds. Whether it's fire safety, whether it's disease safety, whether it's schoolplace, workplace violence, safety, whether it's tomorrow, parking safety. And I asked Detective Wostaki, who's a retired detective, I had the opportunity to work with in Naperville, and he'll never call himself this, but I would call him a national expert. If you watch Fox News, CNN, Bloomberg Report, whoever it is that you enjoy watching, all the major networks, and they say, there's an expert, a national expert on adolescent cyber behavior, it likely coming up next will be Detective Wostaki, and he lives right here in Lockport. We are working year to year with his organization, Be Sure Consulting. Wanted to make you aware of the work that Detective Wostaki does in partnership with our administration and Lockport Police. One, to surveil things in cyberspace that could tell us things are coming our way or handle things in cyberspace. Two, to redirect and educate students who might make a poor choice. And then three, educate parents and students and staff members, what we should be looking for. So Detective Wostaki, what we imagine is he might share for a few minutes, highlight this portion of our safety and security work, and then give board members a chance to ask him questions. So, thanks, Rich.
Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to be part of this group. And when Dr. McBride came aboard, and I retired in 2018, and then I heard he was coming here, I was like, yes. I was like, we're gonna get stuff done. And so what had happened was, during my time in Naperville, I had immersed myself in new legislation. So I wrote the sexting law to make sure that kids were not going to be sex offenders, and they give them diversion. I wrote the swatting law. I wrote the child exploitation online law. And what I'm really proud of, that we, under Senator Leifert and myself and a lady by the name of Michelle McCabeny, had wrote the new SRO legislation that made it mandatory for any SRO in Illinois to have special requirements and certification. And that got passed two years ago, and it's coming to fruition now. Before, what was happening was, when I was training SROs, and I teach for the state of Illinois, my SROs were coming to me in my classes for cyber, and they were like, I was like, how many of you are juvenile officers? They all raised their hand. I mean, how many of you are NASRO certified? And they look at each other like, what's that? So I'm like, what's that? That's like being a doctor and not knowing what the AMA is. So I created, along with Senator Leifert and Michelle, this mandatory training that we have our SROs. And I will tell you that in working with the Lockport Police Department for the past three years, I was part of their community education, helped them with their cyber stuff, and they absolutely know what they're doing. The issue becomes is that what I bring to the table is that whenever the deans, the social workers have something that they don't know if it's criminal, or they don't know what they can do, they know they have me on speed dial 24/7. I don't care if it's 3:00 in the morning, it's happened at 6:00 in the morning, but I'm okay with that, because we need to get on it like that. Just came back from Dallas. This was my 10th presentation that I've done this school year in different states, and I met with the heads of TikTok. I met with the heads of Snapchat. And I have those connections when we need to take a video down of a fight, or if we don't know who posted this, we can find out who has posted. And then I tell the SROs, or I tell the commander, John Arizzi in Lockport, I would submit to you that we do this. And they know exactly what to do in these types of cases. They've been through it time and time again. So the aspect of teachers, social workers, deans coming to me, I am at their disposal 24/7, to get on things very quickly. I'm gonna segue into what I've been teaching over the past summer. The National Exchange Club and myself had put together a program called identifying and intercepting the school shooters who leakage. According to the Secret Service Threat Assessment Survey in 2021, 75% of the school shooters posted what they wanted to do before they did it. We saw that in Michigan, we saw that in Highland Park, we saw that in Parkland. We see it all over the country. But the problem is, school officials don't know what to do with the information, or what they ask the student. When you see something, say something. Some of our law enforcement officers don't know what they do when they get the information on what's possible, because there is not a required education for officers and detectives that they have cyber training. This is a new law that I'm trying to put together, put forth, that every patrol officer in the state of Illinois who's in the academy gets eight hours of cybercrime training. That's what I'm working on currently. Then what happens is, is that the first day, and we're gonna have this training sometime this year, the Lockport Police Department, we're gonna use their training facility, which is right across the street. Not only do we want to train our deans, our principals, our social workers, because they need to know what's possible and what to tell the student who comes forward, see something, say something, but law enforcement is gonna be there. And we're gonna invite law enforcement from all over Will County. And this is gonna be an absolutely free program for everybody. 75% of the time, we can stop school shooters. We can. We just gotta follow the protocol. The second day is law enforcement. They, law enforcement learns by doing. So everybody's gonna be coming with their computers, they're gonna write their preservation letters. With the preservation letter, we can lock an account, delete an account, or no locks or deletions. And then they're gonna do something called an exigent circumstance. If death or great bodily harm is about to be committed, or is going to be committed now, under the Electronics Communications Privacy Act, any law enforcement officer can do a exigent circumstance and find out who the poster of this threat is within hours. We will know within hours who the person is that posted that threat. Then, the rest of the class, we work on search warrants or consent on three areas. We do search warrant or consent, and again, Lockport SROs and their detectives are so good with the public in doing consent because of their reputation, because of how they handle things. They, when they talk to parents, say, we need to search your house for weapons because of this. And they're really good at that. So we do search warrant or consent on the home for weapons. We do search warrant or consent on their social media to find out their intent, what they've been planning, what they've been ordering. And then we do a search warrant or consent on their cell phone. We do a full physical extraction of their cell phone to find out who else they're collaborating with. All of this is, and our focus is to get that student the mental health help they need. Students who have been in this class over the past school year, we have already stopped or identified five school shooters. One in Oregon, one in Washington, one in Michigan, and two in Illinois. So it's really important that we do this training. So that's the training aspect. Of course, in October, at Central Campus for the freshmen, a lot of them have had me in Oak Prairie or 33C. We go through being safe on their devices, their social networks and gaming platforms. We train the parents. And along with what I do, what my organization does, we have a new program called myscybersafeschools.com. If you want to look that in your computer, myscybersafeschools.com. And what this is, is an online education for faculty, parents, and students, elementary to high school, where your social worker, your dean, your principal, your SRO, if you, the principal says, hey, SRO, we have some girls sharing nudes in that homeroom class, can you go talk to them? Alls he has to do, because of our relationship, go in his My Cyber Safe School accounts, press video two, three, and five, have a classroom discussion, pass out the quizzes that go along with the tests. They're done, they've been educated. Very simple. The final thing I'd like to hit on is, in your packets, you have my program of diversion called JuvenileJusticeOnline.org. I want to spend some time on this because it's so important that we get back to restorative justice with our students. We cannot ticket our way out of it, suspend, expel our way out of it, or arrest out of their simple behaviors. Whether it's sexting, whether it's cyberbullying, hate speech, drinking, fighting, but most of all, vaping. We treat vaping as an addiction, because that's what it was designed to do to our children, and that's what it does. We have seen kids in psychological episodes, their breakdowns, their addiction. We, I had one in Naperville where the kid actually went into the SRO's office and said, just give me a hit of one that you have in your desk. That's how addicted the student was. We need to get ahead of this. And giving tickets doesn't work. Suspending kids don't work. We give them the restorative justice and help that they need through, you watch our videos of experts in the field and take a 10-question test. You do a research paper. You go for addiction counseling. You not only go for addiction counseling, you're gonna do some community service in school. And also, you're going to have to have a regimen from your addiction counselor, whether it's gum therapy, to get you and wind you down off of addiction. But that's not enough. Because where, what happens is, when kids are starting to vaping, when they go to mods, they are now putting THC in their vapes. And this is what's killing our kids. And then we are seeing on the West Coast that they're now are putting fentanyl in the wax and killing our kids. So let me ask you this question. Where are our children buying their drugs?
They are buying it from their, oh, here.
On a platform. TikTok, Snapchat, and Instagram. These are the new drug dealers, ladies and gentlemen. So what do we do? We then not only give our students their consequences, we give their parents tools on how to watch their kids. We give them free monitoring software to put on their kids' devices. So if there is drugs, suicidal tendency, self-harm, sexting, cyberbullying, whatever, you'll get, a parent gets an alert to their phone, and they know exactly what their kid is doing. This is how we're gonna save our kids. It's so important to get back to restorative justice. And the unfortunate thing, when I was, Jim Glasgow, the Will County State's attorney, had asked me to create a high-technology crimes unit from 2012 to 2016. We arrested over 100 predators in that operation. And what I saw was, is that some of the law enforcement is getting away from what we call a station adjustment. What I saw, that they were either sending their kids home that they created, that did crimes, back to their parents with nothing, or they arrested them and photographed and fingerprinted and ruined them for the rest of their lives. And there is the pipeline to prison. In Naperville PD, we're hiring tons of new police officers. One of my best friends is doing the background. He says, Rich, we're getting hits on their criminal history when they were 13, doing mailbox damages. And they said, I had that expunged. Once we take fingerprints from the kids, they are never expunged. They will follow them for the rest of their lives. So in the state of Illinois, we are mandated to do something called a station adjustment, instead of arrest, tickets, or expelling them because of SB 100. We must get back to diversion with restorative justice. And in Juvenile Justice Online, just to give you a breakdown, we did 500 diversions last school year. We have 4,000 people, agents using Juvenile Justice Online across the country. Half of it was for vaping. This is how our kids are being addicted to drugs. This is how our kids are getting killed with fentanyl. So we have to do something to stop that behavior. And it starts with us. It starts with us giving them the education. It starts with us giving the parents tools, like Juvenile Justice Online, to give them everything they need. I'm also partnering this new school year with a gentleman by the name of Michael DeLeon. He is an expert in vaping and drug abuse, and he has a program, he has a website called SteeredStraight.org, and I'm going to be part- And I'm going to be partnering with him to handle the vaping and drug portion of, of the education that we do. He's just so powerful. All of the regional offices of education, not all, 39, 9, and 11 have adopted our programming and throughout the state. And hopefully, it's going to be a, a great way to save our kids.
Board members to take in, but one, hearing from Detective Wostaki with questions. You know, if there's a question that you might have in your mind, obviously here for our public who might be live streaming, but also for you. Just about the work that he partners with us to do for safety and security.
Two quick questions. Yes, you opened my eyes under a few comments there. But the social media platforms, you mentioned a couple, are they responsive to that this is a problem and they will help you?
Absolutely, 100%. I, I met them face-to-face when I was in Dallas and then when I was in Atlanta months before that. And we have each other's emails, we have each other's phone numbers. And they know I teach over 2,000 SROs a, a year. And so, they opened that door for me to, to, to take down stuff. I have, I have, we had an incident that Travanna Green had given me. It was, I think it was a fight, right, Dr. McBride? I think it was a fight. And it, and nobody came forward to complain, nobody wanted anybody charged, but we had to get this down. So, there's a process that I use where I get the digital DNA of the video and I send it to them. And alls I need to do is give them a couple of screen names that have it. They'll put it in their servers and they'll try to, to stop that video from being spread. They're very responsive.
And this may be, you talk about what he does with our school. I mean, we, we provide all our students with a Chromebook. Do we have, is there software on here that detects any of the stuff that is going on using our Chromebooks? Can we, can you pick it up?
Yeah, we block and we block what we can, but there's not the same alerting software that you can put on a phone.
There are, there are two companies that are out there that do do web filtering. One is GoGuardian and the other one is Lightspeed Systems. Both are very, very good. The alerts in, in Lightspeed Systems is amazing because actually, they stopped a school shooting. They came to me and they said, "Hey, what do you think about this?" I said, "You need to move on this." The kid was looking up how to buy ammunition. The kid was looking up where to buy AR-15s. He was searching in Google, how long do school shooters last? How many of them kill themselves? So, they actually have a live person getting these alerts and they have a phone tree of the school on who to call and then they move on the student before it happens. It's very important to have these web filtering systems in our systems because the alerts that you get from either GoGuardian or Lightspeed, another thing Lightspeed has is a parent portal that the parent can log into the account and see what their kid's been doing on their Chromebook for the past two months. It's actually fantastic. But those are, GoGuardian has fantastic alerts.
We, we use GoGuardian. We're actually reviewing that relationship we've had for, since we start, since we've been, more or less since we started doing the Chromebooks. We are looking at Lightspeed and there was another one that we were poking around at and I can't come up.
Gaggle?
What?
Was it gaggle?
It's not gaggle. It was newer than, it was brand new. So, the PC, Rich is talking about is called Beacon, I think on GoGuardian. And that's the part we don't have installed, but we do filter and monitor and, and those things. But the Beacon piece is a whole nother thing. And so, a, as we continue to review all that stuff, we do look at other pieces and portions of the program.
It's only so important to have those alerts on because they've stopped so many school shootings. And not only that, self-harm is huge when you have Beacon or alerts set up on either platform.
Oh, I just wanted to comment on the bag that, so we're utilizing Lightspeed Systems for this year. And already, like, we, we had a student that was gaming on their, that was gaming on their school-issued device. And because the word "kill" came up so many times on whatever game that they were playing, we were alerted to it. We knew it was gaming code, but we were able to act on it quickly. So, I mean, so far, I have been impressed with that program.
On their school-issued device, these things aren't even that powerful. What are you even playing? That's so, that's so funny. I, I can't believe someone would do that.
And then, then of course, I can always serve if there are more questions the board has. They're just being timely this evening with my report. And you can always, you know, I can be a connector for Detective Wostaki. You'll see him, looks like Mr. Navarro has a question. But you'll also see him doing some things online, some things in person with our students because the parent education and the student education are very important. Yeah, Mr. Navarro.
One thing that really, so what exactly are the advantages of somebody like turning somebody in, turning themselves in or going to you? You said that you would make them, if somebody, if you found out that somebody has an addiction, you would make them write a paper and make them perform community service. I just don't understand why, like, most people wouldn't want to do that. They wouldn't want to do extra work on top of the work that they're already doing. Like, what exactly are you, like, giving to students where it would be like, no, I really need to get this addiction done? Why should I go to you if you're just going to, in a sense, punish them?
Yeah, maybe if I could, could start that. Generally, those situations aren't voluntary, maybe sometimes. Generally, the way that, you know, some of the work that we, that Detective Wostaki has created is we, we interdict that.
Yes.
There's a teacher referral, a dean referral, social worker referral. It comes to our administration to deal with on the discipline side. And then we have choice. You know, as Detective Wostaki said, there've been traditional instruments, expulsion, suspension, removal from school. But as with most, especially addiction, using education. That isn't a choice for the student to, to stay in school, to be in school in the Behavior Intervention Center. That's where we're going to use the tools that Detective Wostaki is, is, is talking about. I don't know if you have,
At least from my experience, most of the people who are at least soft users of vaping or whatever thing you can imagine, weed and whatever, they are more about like, what's the word? They're so casual, but they realize that they still have an addiction and it's a problem. So, I'm, I'm just concerned, if you are talking about also combating those kids, how are, how are those kids able to go up to you so that they, are, are they going to be punished? I guess is my question.
Let, let me, let me scale it down. So, in, in, in the schools I teach all over the country, and, and my school resource officers and my deans that use Juvenile Justice Online, these kids have been caught in possession of vapes. And there's even a process where they have something called from Swab Tech, where they swab the mouth of the vape. And if it turns out red, and if it's red, that means there's THC in it. So, now it's paraphernalia. So, whether it's having a vape in school, which is illegal, right? For, for a 13, 14, 15-year-old to do, they have broke the rules. And so, there's, there's two things that we do in Juvenile Justice Online. It's on the law enforcement side. If you do the diversion, you're not going to be arrested, fingerprinted, photographed. So, so it, there's a lot for them to lose if they don't do it. On the school side, they could be suspended. They could, out of school, in school for a long time, take their socia's away. I'll, I'll give you another, another example. When Dr. McBride was threatened that somebody's going to kick him in the head, Lockport Police did a fantastic investigation. They found out who the kid was. The school wanted to handle the, the, the punishment. And so, it came back to the school for us to do a diversion. Then what happened was, the mom was told that this could be a kick out of school for five days and you're going to get all your socia's taken away. Well, mom was really upset because he was just kidding. So, bring the kid in and then I'm meeting with the dean and this is what we're going to do. So, we set up this diversion without the student in the room. Because there's other things besides that I'm going to kick Dr. McBride in the head that parents are dealing with, like, he's a slob, he needs to clean his room. We put all of that in the contract and working with the parent. And we give them monitoring software to put in their cellphone if they want it. And we make it part of, you know, he did this threat online, so therefore, parents are going to be held accountable. By the time the mom left and we showed the kid the contract, he's looking at his mom like, "Did you do this?" No, they did it. He went outside and she was like, "Thank you so much."
And, and really the answer to that, Mr. Navarro, is in, in, in that case, we have all these tools, arrest, suspension, expulsion. And, and really what Detective Wostaki is suggesting is using education.
Yes.
So, just a sense of time, you know, I want to make sure, like you said, if, if folks have questions, I'm, I'm happy to be a connector. You know, I always take board questions, send them to Detective Wostaki. But thanks so much for being here tonight and doing the work and partnering with us.
Thank you so much.
I, I only have a few more parts. The, the other piece of health safety is, I was talking to Mr. Navarro this afternoon on the phone. He was asking about Will County being in high. I just want to remind board members that our plan, that, that really you approved last year, you revised on August 28th. We look at Will County, but we also look at our internal metrics. What's happening with the people that will be in this facility, our facilities tomorrow? So, we'll carefully monitor those. If that changes in some drastic or dramatic way, we'll be coming together with you. I emailed parents this evening. Really, the best, I think, descriptor of the plan that we have is a personal health plan. We are appealing to people to learn, to use everything we've learned about COVID-19 from, please don't come if you're a teacher or a student with symptoms. That's true with flu, that's true with norovirus. Please don't come if you have symptoms, get home. Here are the circumstances that we have to follow if you're staying home, all the way to consider vaccination. And if you just, you feel like you need to wear a mask, be comfortable doing that. Also, as board members know, the lawsuit that we and 145 other school districts, there's some clarity now. COVID mitigations was dismissed last week. So, that again, puts you really in the decision-making posture for, for our district. So, we, we learned of that last Friday. Finally, facilities issues. Thank you, I couldn't, I'm sorry I couldn't join you last month, but for your discussion about facilities. I just want to check for understanding about what I heard. Facilities and Finance Committee is going to meet next week. What I think I heard, is the board is not inclined to handle some of the facilities issues we have through new construction in our property. The expense, thoughts about what, what Central means. Mr. Navarro brought up where our facilities are currently sited geographically. They're in the center and that makes them accessible for everyone. So, I heard exploring renovation, especially of the facilities here that might need some renovation, but especially Central and its vintage. And then also the issues related to maintenance. So, the, the next step for us would be, if that's accurate, would be Finance and Facility Committee meets next week, exploring that more in-depth. And then, me starting to do the work on your behalf of what is at first a community engagement program to find out if that's your thought. Is that a thought that's shared by others? We had lots of complaints about how hot it was at Central during freshman orientation. You know, kind of a, a reminder of the need for a facility update, right? Am I, am I understanding your, your consensus correctly? Okay, we'll get, we'll get cracking on that. So, a few notes about how we're stylizing our calendar for the public and for you. Trying to create a 10-month calendar this year that, that has some things that takes into consideration our busy lives. That is my report. And I'll let you call up our next report, President Lopez-Guiva.
It's our curriculum report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we did give you a quick kind of update concise here on two pages, front and back. Just like, we gave you some updates from the end of the year last year, I think in May. And then, so we've updated this to also include some future focus. We are going to talk about really two items tonight, but we're, of course, we're happy to answer any questions or delve into any particular topic you might want to hear on this. But as Ms. Johnson brought up at the last meeting, at our Curriculum Committee meeting, we really dug deep into our literacy coaching program. And so, she said, "Hey, make sure you talk about that." And so, I'll do my best and you chime in whenever you may want to. So, just a reminder, DMG, District Management Group, did an audit of our district to see how well we are supporting struggling learners. And one of their recommendations was that we implement an instructional coaching program. And so, they also highlighted in their report to us why this was research-based. They had a beautiful graph, we could reshare it with you. But in essence, if you want to change teacher practice and you do just like a presentation, maybe 5% of teachers will change, right? If you do a demonstration, it's like 0% change. But if you do an instructional coaching program, you will see 80% of the people will be able to carry that out and change. So, the evidence was really strongly there. And I would just use this really quick analogy. When you're trying to implement an instructional coaching program, it's like an athletic coaching program or a weightlifting program, right? Anybody from somebody who has never worked out before can benefit from having a weightlifting, physical fitness coach all the way to, I'm sure, Michael Jordan during his six NBA championships had his own physical fitness coach. Because that coach could specifically work with him and amp up where he might have needed it, just like this person down here who might be new to physical fitness, has different needs. So, really, we wanted to make sure our instructional coaching program was focused and that people saw it, it can help everybody. It doesn't mean only great teachers get it or only struggling teachers get it. Everybody can benefit because the coaches work with you. So, also, one of the things we did to try and narrow the focus was focus on literacy. Because literacy is something that happens across all of our classrooms. We're always trying to help students with content literacy in their area and strategy. So, you can imagine, like in a biology classroom, the words you're using and the way you might attack the reading materials or numbers or charts might be slightly different than it is in an English classroom. So, any teacher, again, very narrow and very focused on this idea of literacy. So, last year, we had three coaches who worked really in-depth with 20 staff members over the course of the year. They met four times during the year, like as a whole group, to talk about some holistic approaches. And then the coaches met weekly with individual teachers. And the teachers set goals, and there were a lot of goals. I'll give you a rundown of some of the examples. But in the end of our program and in their report, the coaches did a Likert scale rating with the teachers to see how effective they were and what did the teachers get out of the program. And on every single statement, the coaches received four, meaning agree, to a five, strongly agree statements. And I just wanted to read a couple of them to you. The literacy, literacy coaching cohort helped me reflect on my teaching resulting in the development of my instructional practices. So, that's growth in my practices. The next one, my students demonstrated improvement in their reading and comprehension based on my work with the coaches. And then lastly, my students demonstrated improvement in their overall performance, right? So, we, we want to know you grow as a teacher, but more importantly, how is this transferring to the students? And they said, "It did happen for both." So, some of the goals that our teachers write and then the coaches work to support them with resources, classroom visits, meeting and just processing and planning, was everything from developing comprehension strategies to critical thinking skills in the classroom, to helping teachers meet the individual needs of the different style learners in their classroom, working on inferencing, strategies, rubrics. So, really, our coaches, they, whatever the teachers needed to talk about and work on, even if it was something like, "I'm struggling with student engagement in my classroom on a larger scale or I need some help with behavior management in my classroom," the coaches were there to help our teachers with anything they needed. So, I would say that one thing, we had a really interesting situation at the tail end of the year, like the last week of school, we had a teacher, one of our instructional, or literacy coaches not decide not to come back. And so, we posted and it was really exciting. John Greenan was in on this. We had 12 fantastic staff members apply for instructional coaching position. And we have, one of our Spanish teachers is going to be our new instructional coach. So, the only slight shift there is it widened our pool by just saying instructional coaching because the first round, we wanted to see like a reading specialist endorsement. But really, the literacy coaches, they did the job of an instructional coach. They gave us the focus at the beginning and we're going to do that same cohort this year. That's our plan to have a literacy coaching cohort. But they really do the job of helping teachers set goals and then follow through on meeting the goals to better help our students. And that was really, because we had, we had a couple of the- And that was really, 'cause we had, we had a couple of the coaches, we had videos, we had more, we dissected some more things. Um, but that's in brief what we probably spent thirty minutes talking about at our last Curriculum Committee meeting.
I think the key to this is, I, I know, and I do it especially, we focus on giving the kids what they need so that they can improve and, uh, grow. You know, but you gotta also have your teachers up to speed in where they need to be.
Mm-hmm.
So these coaches are there to give feedback and instructions. And they know the latest techniques or whatever to do. So they will come to you and say, okay, how about trying this? And that was some of the testimony she gave where the stu- where the teacher said how she felt better and the student also, you know. Because, so we see it's working by doing that coaching. And it's not like it's, I won't say it's real time, but it's, uh, you know, they do it, you know, so that, you know, it makes a difference.
Yeah, and it can be real time because the coach and the teacher could design a lesson, and then the coach could go in and maybe teach it, and the teacher watches, and then vice versa. Or the teacher's doing it and the coach can be in there and say, hey, what kind of adjustments do we need to make for this? And one of the things that, um, the Curriculum Committee members asked, and I was so appreciative of this, they asked, do we provide training for our coaches? And we absolutely did. We had a, a consultant who's an expert in the area, working with them throughout the year. Um, they went to other PDs and we were just, I was actually just in a meeting with them recently about what, what's the PD we need to do next? What's the next step? Because, um, there's a couple of different ways you can approach it. And pro- the best way usually is with everything is when you integrate it and know the teacher or the individual that you're working with so you can meet their needs.
Um, I'm going to be very brief, um, and update you on our MTSS call. It's a huge, um, undertaking, but we really have made some great strides. And, um, we did have our, um, Solution Tree Consultant out, um, Troy Gavel, who came out and worked with our administrative team to kind of set the groundwork and set our work plan for this school year. He will be back out in September. He'll be working directly with our guidance and counseling staff as well as our DC Council in the afternoon to continue our efforts and, uh, work towards that systemized process for students, um, to receive interventions, um, in real time. Any questions? All right, awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did, did you have a question?
Yeah, the attachment that you had on your report.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you got the various goals?
Yes.
Do we have baselines on those?
So what we've done is we have kind of t- uh, gave you a goal update about where, what we have completed this school year, and then where our future focus is for this next school year.
I think there are some in here, Ms. Johnson. Like if you looked at Goal Two, where we have that like math and science plus support systems that are gonna be in place, we've got some ideas, like how can we get some quantitative or numerical data around that? Um, some like the coaching, you know, we talked about like the best we can do is talk about the Likert scale and the experiences. And hopefully, the improvement of the students leads to the board goal of all students having college credit and/or career, um, experiences by the time they graduate.
I would like, now I was gonna talk to when we have the next Curriculum Committee. I'll tell you now, it's potential to have this as a little mini dashboard so we can see. You know, we could talk about, you know, see where we are.
Yep.
And how's it going?
All right.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Next, we have our principal reports.
Good evening, everybody. I'm very excited to start off tomorrow, but we did have our freshman orientation take place on August second and third. We had over eight hundred and seventy families come through on those two days. And then since then, on their makeup, on the ninth and tenth, we had sixty more families come through. So right now, our freshman class is nine hundred and sixty and counting. So we've had, uh, a couple of families contact us, um, that they are moving into the district within the next week. So we'll be ticking up just a slight bit. But we're very excited, um, to welcome our newest porters tomorrow at Central Campus.
We had Welcome Back Days on August fourth and fifth. Really feel like when the calendar turns to August, it's like we, we kinda start. I, I feel like with freshman orientation, Welcome Back Days, it was awesome to have our new teachers, our new staff, I should say, in last week, uh, for three days. Tony Candari and his office do a fantastic job running a great induction program. And we had our, our staff back today for our first all-staff institute, so it was wonderful. Um, but with Welcome Back Days, just another great, um, opportunity for our students coming to East Campus for the first time, our rising sophomores, and then of course, our juniors and seniors. And I don't always like to be repetitive, but for a, a third time, Katie Kishline, Dr. McBride and myself, I, I do have to give a major, big shout out, shout out to our buildings, maintenance and ground staff. Um, you can't take for granted the beautiful facilities we have here and the work that it takes to keep them looking beautiful. And it's also, I think, important to mention, you know, with Tim Russ resigning and moving on to another opportunity, um, that building supervisor position was in a transition during this time, a very critical time to get our building ready. So thank you to Bill Thompson and his staff. Um, thank you to Matt Bartley. Uh, thank you to Chip Schmidt, who stepped up, um, in a role, uh, that he had not been in before, um, to get our building ready for Welcome Back Days. Um, it was a great two days, and then we had a makeup day on August eighth. Uh, you could see over the, the course of the two days in person was, um, we had nearly twenty-three hundred students and families come to East Campus. Then we had even more on August eighth. Um, the online residency verification continues to be a great process, and those numbers continued to rise. Last year was in the upper sixty percent. This year, as you can see, was seventy-eight percent. And it just makes the process for our families and students, um, much more efficient when they come here. Um, to be able to provide the necessary documents that they need to online for residency. But then when they get here, it's just a quick check-in. Um, but for those families who, who aren't able to do that for whatever reason, um, it can take a little bit more time. But regardless, um, the students get their schedule, they get a chance to walk their building, walk the building, they get their ID. They have an opportunity to pay school fees. Our seniors can get their parking permit taken care of. And it was just great to see, um, our students and families. And oh, Carrie and I, with our culture and climate goal that we'll be talking more as the year moves on, um, we've changed it a little bit to be more purposeful with our students, with their academic planning and getting involved. And we'll be sharing more of that with you as the year goes on. And Carrie and I were very purposeful, uh, during freshman orientation, Welcome Back Days, to not just, of course, welcome and say hello and how was your summer, but start to get to know some of our students, some of our students transferring in. Uh, some sophomores who I haven't really maybe seen, just ask them, are you involved in everything? In a lot of cases, it was nice to hear a yes, but in some cases, when they said that they weren't, dig a little bit deeper. Ask them what they're involved in or what they're interested in, I should say. Mention some coaches' names or, or club sponsor names and then have follow-ups with them. So that's just a little bit of what Carrie and I are going to be doing this school year. Um, and as Carrie mentioned, we obviously are very excited for tomorrow, day one of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
And obviously, no discipline reports.
No attendance reports, yeah.
I'd be impressed if someone gets in trouble before school even started.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Good luck tomorrow.
Stay good.
Thanks.
Then, all right, next we have our maintenance report, if you can.
Yeah, I can convey this maintenance report. This is before school, before school, before school, before school. Uh, so you can see, um, uh, from Mr. Thompson, you know, we, we continue to do so much in, um, the Department of Energy Efficiency and, and, and so much in terms of classrooms and, uh, adjustable LED, um, fixtures, the CO2 monitoring, uh, is, is making sure that we've got proper airflow. Um, but you can see all of these items. Air conditioning unit in the kitchen at, at Central, test lockdown equipment, that's what you see out in the hallways. Making sure Mr. Dusterhoff, Mr. Thompson worked on that. Making sure all of our communications and our ability to call lockdown from any point. New countertops, sinks, uh, auditorium restroom at East Campus. That's just all that type of work to really get the place ready. Any questions for me, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Dusterhoff?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right, moving on, then to our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, number two to number ten?
So move.
Second. Oh, it's been, uh, motion by Mr. Eyes and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to any of those consent agenda items? Here and then, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Eyes?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. All right, moving on to our action consideration items. Do I have a motion to approve the donation or disposal of all student desks and furniture?
So move.
Sorry.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Eyes?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. All right, I have a motion to approve the purchase and installation of theatrical lighting and audiovisual systems.
I have questions first on that.
Okay, all right.
No, I wouldn't. You know, Bill, I'll, thank you for a job well done over the summer as well. Um, I see the Xcel Electric. What's the, gonna be the timing of the, of these, you know, the cu- you know, the cost expenditures? Are they gonna be in the full school year, the, this fiscal year right now, or is it gonna be spread over more than one year?
No, it isn't this fiscal year.
Oh, okay, so be the, I think, winter time, Christmas, you know.
Right.
Yeah, right after Christmas, the twenty-eighth will be starting, and it'll be done by the end of January. So, um, yeah, we can get all done in that six-week period.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and the board approved this bidding process last year.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Because of supply and then labor, we, we couldn't get it done over the summer.
Nope. I, I was just, wasn't sure of the timeframe, so.
You just need a motion then? All right, it's been motioned by, uh, Mr. Travis and second by Dr. Shaw. All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Eyes?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. All right, next we have Press Policy, uh, one oh nine.
Of course.
This was, uh, Release May twenty twenty-two. Uh, I'm happy I have the slides up if we need to go through any of the slides. This group of policies really is changing some verbiage, uh, some slight changes, um, to ideas. But really, um, I would answer any questions board members might have about these policies. My recommendation would be that we, uh, adopt them. Uh, but why don't I open up if there's any questions or anything in any of these, um, that, that are a concern? But the, the changes here are, are very slight.
Right.
We already talked about this, I think, like-
We did, last month, we had our first reading. This is a second reading. If, if any board members have questions or any, any, any concerns with these policies. My recommendation would be that you adopt them as presented. And I did forget to mention my Superdinner report. I can't go back. But thank you to our Athletic Department who helped us make sure that on Friday, our board members look good. Because, you know, Dr. Green, what do we wear on Friday?
Porter.
We wear porter wear. I got both Dr. Green and Dr. Green, so, you know, making sure you guys are in style.
Thank you.
Uh, for sure. So, on to, uh, policy.
We'll definitely be wearing it at our first football game, right, August twenty-sixth, is that?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, all right. Okay, do I-
It'll warm this Friday with a sweatshirt.
Right.
Do I have a motion to approve the Press one oh nine, one oh nine policy?
So move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Eyes and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Eyes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes. Okay, announcements.
Uh, really not too many announcements. We just came off of two weeks of many, many, many events that board members are always welcome to. I don't need to tell you, tomorrow is the first day of school. Friday is our maroon and white sort of, uh, scrimmage. And then the following weekend is our first home football game. As always, I'll have a board update. Any other events that you might be interested in attending? And, you know, s- look for some upcoming announcements about, uh, after the Finance and Facility Committee, uh, maybe a thought exchange about our facilities, maybe some online, and then some in-person town halls to broaden the conversation.
And then, um, Ms. Travis, you're gonna be chairing that, right?
I'll, I'll be there Monday.
Okay.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Right here.
Right here, okay. All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn this next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
And I can second it. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski, second by Ms. Lopez Cunha. All in favor? Thirty-seven.